So, we actually have a quorum, we'll call it to order, it's like seven oh nine. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to our agenda? By the way, I have a couple more agendas. And we could probably make some more copies if we need to. But are there any additions or corrections, folks? No?
Not for me.
Great. Okay, members of the public. Don't think we actually have any. Can I? Can you what? You a member of the public? I figured I'd introduce ourselves, I figured we were gonna go through board introductions.
Well, what I wanted to say was welcome.
Yeah.
We have some new, we have new administrators.
We have a whole new administration.
Yes, it's kind of important to...
Bill, Lori, Bob, welcome.
To reach out to them. Pretty excited about it.
I know, I've been nervous, I'm like, wow, it's the first meeting with a whole new group of guys. With a whole new group of people.
Turns out they're not all that new.
I know, but still, it's like, you know, what do I expect?
We're having the same things.
So, probably you don't know as all of us either, do you? I'm Joe, Winrick, you all know me. We'll start at the far end down there. Twilight.
Hi.
Introduce yourself to these kind of people.
I'm Twilight Holden, I'm from Townsend.
I'm Allie Dirkoli, I'm from West Townsend.
Patty Dixon, Jamaica.
Drew Hizzleton, Jamaica.
Billy Long, Newfoundland.
All right. Dominic.
Dominic Schmidt, Townsend.
Dominic is our student board member for the next two years.
You should introduce yourselves too, because public wants to hear.
Bob Sebo, new principal.
Laurie Garland, interim business manager.
I'm Bill Antone, I'm the new superintendent.
All right.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, the next members of the public, we have none. Correspondence, does anyone have any correspondence? Anybody got any? Nothing? Beautiful, we're whipping through this. Okay. Typically, you know, we've had administrative reports from the various, you know, you guys. I don't know what you have, I don't know what you have, but, you know, Bob, please.
I got a couple things here. Related it earlier, I suppose.
It's okay.
So, I have one report that was put together by the existing administration.
I have one question.
Yeah, we'll just pass them down.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll just pass them down.
So, there's kind of a cover, cover page, which is a single page, and then there's a little packet. The single page is, I guess, my report, and it starts with the one report that was left by the previous administration on the behavior analysis for the year. And I can talk a little bit about any of that data, although I didn't write the report, I didn't research the report, so I can read it just like you, but I don't really have any answers for any of it. But if you have questions, I'm happy to entertain that. Thank you. And then, obviously, I've been on a job for just under two weeks, so I'd like to say I haven't done a whole lot so far, but you can see there's a bunch of things already going on that I've been involved with. Joe and I met...
Last week?
Last week, to talk about what sort of expectations you guys would have for reporting out. And we decided just to try to start from ground zero and try to build up based on what folks' needs are. So, just to give you guys a sense of where we're at, a couple of bullet points here. We are almost up to full staff for the building for the fall. We have some interviews next week for the band director, we had offered a contract and we were turned down, so we're sort of back to the drawing board on that, to replace Mr. Goodmoat. The other ones were close to or finished hiring. One of the new things, I ventured into a contract with VTVLC, and I'll do my best to try to take away the mystery from some of the acronyms here, it's the Vermont Virtual Learning Collaborative. And some of you may be familiar with the program we used to have here called VHS, which was the Virtual High School. That was more of a national program. VTVLC is a Vermont-only program, so it's only Vermont schools that are members of it, and so all the teachers are Vermont licensed, so there's an added bonus to that. It runs out of the tech center in Springfield, that's a separate organization from their tech center, but we're gonna pay a small fee to be a membership, a member of that, dedicate one teacher to teach a class, and in turn we'll receive 25 slots for our teachers to take, for our students to take whatever coursework they'd like to take per year. And then we'll see how that goes. If we need more, we can add to it, we can, but we'll start with, sort of, the minimum package to start. So, we'll try that. And I've also done a survey of staff to find out sort of needs, strengths and needs assessments, so I can kind of get a picture going in as to what people view of the strengths of the school, and also what they view are things that need to be changed, and just open form around what new things would they like to explore. So, I've been gathering data from staff on that, and I'm happy to talk with you guys more about that as I complete that analysis. And I would like to survey you guys, or meet with you guys, to talk about what your visions are for the school moving forward as well, at some point, but not tonight, probably. The budget management piece, I think we're gonna get a little presentation tonight about where we are with the budget, so I've been learning a little bit about what the makeup of that is, and what lines go where, and it's, you know, every, you know, I've been doing it for seven years in Springfield, every school does it differently, and trying to figure all the, where things are hidden and not hidden, and how to figure it all out. So, I've been spending some time with Lori, trying to figure all that out. I didn't get to know my office staff, they're the only ones really around in the summer, so I've been meeting with them, we're trying to learn from them around what their roles and responsibilities are. I gained to know them a little bit, settled into my office, and I've had some teachers come in and meet with me as well. And one new thing that I just want to point out that gives us a little bit of a leg up at the state level, so Bill had been on the Vermont Principals Association Executive Council as a principal in Dover. Since he's no longer a principal, they kicked him out of the VPA Executive Council, and they were looking for someone to replace him, so I got the invite to join the Executive Council of the Vermont Principals Association, so I accepted, went for my training today up in Rutland, and will be a member of that organization as well, which gives us some, you know, pull in the state level for different kinds of things. So, that's kind of a cool new thing that I've just started to say. So, that's really nutshell what I've been doing for the last two weeks. Happy to entertain any questions, want any of the stuff in here, or anything else you guys have?
Sure. Any other question? I didn't say, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought somebody, I thought you said me.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. The staffing, are these any new positions, or are they just people who didn't resign?
These are, well, the math teacher is a new position, but you guys approved that. Nothing that you guys don't know about at this point. English teacher is a replacement for a teacher who departed at the end of the school year. I don't think that was anticipated. The academy staffing is really, the schedule for, and I can explain what all this stuff is, but basically there's a study hall component, which they call academy. The schedule didn't account for enough slots to be filled, so we ended up recalling someone who had been ripped from that to fill that position. Computer science was a slash art position, where we, our teacher left to ironically go to Springfield, so we are filling that. That one, we're very close to being done, we're sort of in the final, trying to figure out how that's gonna play out financially. Like I said, the band director one is Riley left at the end of the year, and we're still interviewing for that next week, so.
Thank you.
That one is unfilled, that's it right now.
Thank you.
Emily?
So, going back to the VTVLC TC, VLC, which I hate acronyms too. But anyway, I'm curious about the course descriptions, is there something where we can look at that and see?
Yeah.
I'm pretty excited about this, and I'm really happy you're doing this, and I think it's a wonderful thing. Our students need to have access to...
I couldn't agree more.
A lot more than we can afford to give them here.
If you go to VTVLC.org is their website, and you can look at all the different courses that they have. It's not as wide of an array as VHS has, but the trade-off is it's all Vermont teachers, which means not only we know that they're covered by a Vermont licensure, but also they're local to us, so that the kids need to reach out to someone, they're in their time zone, they can connect that teacher during the day. There's a dean of students who helps the kids manage the technology side of things in Springfield, who works with the kids, and our council is here on the ground, and yeah, it's a pretty good program, and it's sort of up and coming, I would say. It's been probably five years in the build.
Yeah, I thought so. Nice. So, we don't have anybody on staff yet who's going to be doing that, but that's something you're developing.
Actually, Tom Chen is gonna be teaching the Chinese II class.
Oh, so you already have.
Yep, she and I worked that out.
Oh, okay, great.
She's gonna teach a Chinese II class, she had experience with VHS in the past.
Yeah, I remember.
Yep, so she's gonna be doing that, and it's a great use of her time, and they desperately like having language teachers do that for the state, so.
All right, I'll go on and look at it, may have other questions. Thank you.
Absolutely, come back anytime.
Thanks.
And I could do a presentation about it, you know, later on during the year too, if you'd like, and maybe bring in some students once kids are enrolled in, and have them talk about their experience.
Yeah, that would be, that's the best way to hear from them.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, thanks.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else have a question? No?
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Bill?
I do not have a formal report for you tonight, but I will give you a little update of, I've been on the job since the fifth, but I've been lucky enough to kind of been watching for the past year. I'm currently meeting with all the board chairs to find out what the different rhythms are of how different chairs work, how different boards work, the things that are important to them, giving them a taste of how I operate, how I wanna partner with our principals in our business office. I've established our central office cabinet, which is myself, our special education director, our technology director, our business manager, and our curriculum director, and we meet every Wednesday. Just an opportunity that we can lock down and make sure that we are coordinating all aspects of the district, and making sure that that is, you know, sacred space where we can lead from, distributed leadership model. And the entire group of administrators will be attending the Vermont Principals Association Leadership Academy the second, third, and fourth of August, and very exciting, it's the first time that we've had everybody go at the same time. It's a three-day, two-and-a-half-day conference, and we will be working on literacy specific to the common core, all hearing the same type of work, and then we have a half a day from eight to 12 on the third day, which will be led by our director of curriculum, kind of debriefing what we have learned, and getting ready to make some plans for how we're gonna take our learning into the district. So, that's kind of what we've been working on for about seven days.
It's a lot in seven days.
Seven days.
It's exciting.
That is exciting.
Anyone have questions for Bill? Thank you. Hmm? All right. Thank you, sir. Whenever you're ready.
Well, I too have been learning your budget, and trying to learn it inside and out in the past seven days. So, what I did here was I basically took you through how you ended the year in '15, you know, you had a negative fund balance of $70,000, and you had a plan in place to erase that negative fund balance with an additional 23 to add to the fund balance. With, right now, as it stands, the difference between actual revenues and actual expenses, you're going to retire your fund balance, your negative fund balance, and end the year with a positive fund balance of approximately $54,000. So, you're doing better than your plan, which is great. Of course, my little note at the bottom there says that, you know, these are unaudited figures and expenses come in after the fact, so. So, I broke down the major categorical expenses, and the variance is there. You can relate it back to the budget sheet, the budget summary on the back there, of how you basically came out. So, I'll let you just look at those for a second, if you have any questions before It's a lot to absorb, a lot of numbers to absorb. So, overall, you know, the major revenue variances, I'll go to those now. You know, those are fairly typical, but the two that are not typical are the ed spending grant and the transportation grant. And so, I just, I guess I would like to caution, where our team is looking into why you got so much more money in both of those categories. I'm, you know, cautiously optimistic that the state didn't make a mistake, make a mistake, and that everything will be fine, but sometimes if it's too good to be true, it's too good to be true.
So, those two figures of 34, 35, and 87 are above what we expected?
Correct. And 87 is a big jump.
That's a substantial amount, yeah. And those are taken into account in all the calculations above, where we end up a little bit ahead, so if those were to go away, it would change things drastically.
Yes, so that's why I'd like to, you know, caution about.
Okay.
I'm glad you're being cautious.
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't know if this is self-explanatory. Our intensive needs program, is that state-funded, is that why it's all blocked out there?
No, that's basically, the intensive needs program now runs through Wyndham Central.
Okay.
So...
Just curious.
So, moving on to fiscal year '17. So, the published budget was overstated by $13,905. You know, it's actually a good thing in this case, but that happened. And then, based on actual contracts issued for the budget, it's, the budget's really understated by about $73,000 right now, currently. So, you can see the contributing factors are the math teacher and the increase in driver's ed. So, the net effect is a negative $59,000 to start the year. So, if everything, if the state is really gonna let us keep that money, then you're okay, but be cautious.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
The overstated by $14,000, do we know where and why?
Well, when I was working...
I mean, is it just a bunch of different places, is that where?
No, the actual totals are different than in this published budget here.
Yeah, I don't know.
I, it's just an error.
So, it was just an error?
I believe it was just an error.
Okay, okay. Gotcha.
And the, the numbers all kind of flow from one another, right? So, the $31,000 surplus that's at the end of fiscal 2016 is what's keeping the net $59,000 whole for 2017 low. We're already using that money to pay down. Okay, just making sure. Okay. Anybody else have any questions about this?
Thanks for finding it.
Oh, the $13,000?
Yeah.
Yeah. Bob was happy to.
Just briefly.
Do we know, do we know why the food service budget is off $10,000 exactly?
Because we forgot to budget for it.
No, actually...
But it's over, not under.
Yeah, so actually, we looked into that today.
We...
Did we forget to pay them?
No, we didn't forget to pay them. No, what it was, it was actually over-budgeted.
Right, because we thought we hadn't, and we did, or something, is that how it worked?
Well, this food service that's in the general fund, so most of your food service runs out of the special revenue fund. But this is Wyndham Central's assessment, basically, to run the food service. And our assessment to you is only $9,000, so 19 was budgeted, as I can tell you.
So, looking at the numbers here, worst-case scenario, if the grants, if we are unable to keep the grant funding, we're gonna be looking at $150-plus thousand dollars?
Sixteen...
Yeah, it'll be worse than that.
Like $175?
It'll be $180,000.
Yeah.
You're 34, you're 87, and you're 59. Yes.
Ouch.
Yeah.
I believe the ed spending is probably okay. You know, those come down through the state and the Act 68 cash, final cash flow documents, so the, that should be fine, it's just, you know, what happens at the end of the year with reconciliations and all that, but, you know, I'm a little concerned about the 87, to be honest, to be really clear.
And the moment we find out, we will...
Absolutely.
Update you.
Yeah, do we have any, any idea of the timeframe of how we, when we know?
Yeah, I have two calls into the AOE, Brad James is on vacation, so...
You're a little concerned about which one?
The...
The transportation.
The transportation.
The 87, six hundred.
Yeah, the budget was for 52, and it's my understanding that those numbers are pretty solid. That 52 budget should have been a pretty solid number, because we know about it ahead of time, so that's why I'm a little concerned about that one.
What do we budget for this year? Is it gonna be?
The, I don't have a copy of the revenue budget for this year with me, so I'm not quite sure, but I can get back to you on that if you'd like.
I have the revenue budget too.
That's good. So, anybody else have more?
You have the revenue budget?
Yeah, but it's not... It's not, yeah. I'm sure it's too early to ask if we have any idea how we're gonna address this, should it come to pass.
State for transportation.
The 87,000.
You know, the 59, the 59 already, the 87 should it come, I mean, I imagine you're in the initial stages of trying to figure out how to deal with that.
I am.
Okay.
And learn, learn the budget.
Yes, right.
It's 52.
Yeah, it is 52.
For next year as well.
Yeah. Okay. Well?
Fundraisers.
Sure, you're, you're... Our member of the public wants to comment?
Yeah, I'm a member of your towns, but that was a really nice financial report, and it was really, I liked the way you did it, put it together in the front, and you should be commended for that, you did an excellent job.
Thank you very much.
If somebody doesn't even know their budget, it's, I mean, just sitting here, I learned a lot, so.
Yeah, it's nice to have...
Yes.
The summary on the front, I remember.
Yeah.
I like that, I like the summary.
Yeah, well, we will continue that model then.
Thank you.
Really comprehensible.
Thanks, Rich.
All right.
You're the budget person, I love it.
I know you are.
Yeah. All right, so, go ahead, Penny.
I just checked the Jamaica page, and it passed by three votes to poll out of the union.
What were the numbers?
Seventy-eight, four, and 75 against.
Wow. How many voters in Jamaica?
600.
Low turnout.
It just, it appalls, it's a problem. I'm appalled.
Yeah. That's so close, I'd petition for a revote.
Bye, Rich.
Bye, Rich. All right, so, does anybody else have any questions for Lori?
Why do this?
I agree with Rich, by the way, that's extremely understandable and concise, clear. Yes?
I was just gonna say, can we have a point on the agenda, just discuss that information at some point here? We can do it under other business, or whatever you want.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we probably put it under other.
I just wanna make sure that since we are, it's been announced, we actually should have a conversation about what the next steps are.
Yeah, I'll add it, I'll add it down under other.
Just double-check and make sure.
Sorry, which was that, what's going on in the agenda?
The results of the Jamaica vote regarding withdrawing from the Billy and Melanie Gray It appears they actually voted to withdraw. So, moving along to old business, we had a motion last time regarding the budget surplus being applied to an SAP position that had been tabled till this meeting, right? So, under old business, we'll pick it, we, you did put a timeline on it, so we have to pick it up off the table today. So, I guess we now could reopen discussion on that motion. You know... Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the discussion was. I know that Melanie was here presenting. I guess, a couple things. One, I'll go on record saying that, is there a need for services for students who have drug and alcohol problems or addictions and family situations in the valley?
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's not a debate, I don't think we have to discuss that part of it. The question is, to me, walking into the building is, what supports do we have in place already? How can we reorganize those supports to make sure that we're getting kids what they need in light of budget stuff that seems a little dicey right now, and in light of what that money might end up being? It's not gonna get really at the whole problem. So, Durin, before she left, had asked the Stratton Foundation for a grant to help assist with that. They have froze all their grant giving for now, for some other financial reasons that they're having, so that, I have nothing to offer from that element of it. I guess it'd be my suggestion, and certainly presumptuous coming in my first board meeting, but it would be my recommendation that we hold off on that decision around that, give me an opportunity to kind of get into the building, learn a little bit more about what people do, you know, really have a chance to understand the budget better. It's not, the SAP position is not one that has to be filled like a teacher, like a year-round contractual type of thing, so, you know, if in a few months we wanna revisit, or mid-year, talk about where we're at and what that means, you know, we could always move to do something mid-year. If the budget stuff has been settled more, we have a better idea of what's happening and where we will sit. I just, I'm not sure that that's something I would recommend jumping right into right now. Again, doesn't mean that there isn't a problem, that we don't need the support, absolutely. I just can't, I just can't endorse that move right now without knowing more about the school, till I've been here and had a chance to kind of review what people's roles are, make sure that we're getting efficient use of all of our resources right now before we commit additional resources, that would be deficit spending in addition to possible other deficits we already have. So, that would be my recommendation at this point, but obviously, if you guys vote to fund it, then I'll hire someone for whatever part-time that money would allow that you discussed, but, so I just wanna put that on the table and let you guys discuss that further.
Thanks. Patty?
Since I made the motion, I, I'm good with that, knowing that you understand that there is a need, there's a huge need. And, 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 you know, I, I'm great with being able to revisit it and see how you're fulfilling that need that we have, and making sure that these kids are not falling through the cracks, that we don't have an ever-increasing, you know, issue with substance abuse, because it looks like in a couple categories we went up, and one we went down, and, you know, it might be the kids, the particular kids, and I do know that that's part of some of the numbers, also there are personalities and real people that go along with the numbers. But I do feel there is a huge need for some resources to go toward this type of counseling.
And when I was in Springfield, and we lost funding for different reasons, but we lost funding for our SAP, I think in my second or third year, and, you know, it's a district, so it's a, it's a different structure. The district had X amount of funds, and we couldn't fund a middle school position and a high school position, so we decided that it would be better to try to do it at the middle level as a preventative measure rather than sort of reactive measure, so we, the high school sort of backed away from that and pushed it towards the middle school to really do that work. Like, you know, could we have used this still at the high school, in Springfield particularly? Absolutely. I don't think it's really much different here, I mean, I think maybe different drugs, different days, I don't know, but I think it's certainly drugs and alcohol were a significant issue 10 years ago when I was teaching here. I don't think it's gone away.
Yeah.
And if anything, it's probably gotten worse because of the economics of the place. So, yeah, I'm not walking into that blind thinking that's not an issue, I just, you know, you have to kind of do things in a measured way and figure out what it is that we really need. And I, and I'm not suggesting that there's, that there's a lot of inefficiencies around how positions are created here and how they're staff, but I just would like to have a better handle on that first. You know, there might be ways to reorganize and reshuffle and have people do things a different way.
Yeah, new eyes see different opportunities.
Absolutely, so.
Emily?
I appreciate that perspective, and I agree with what you're saying. I also look forward to, if you have the opportunity, to look at... to look at the programs that we offer, and whether they're actually effective or not. Because it's not only a budget issue for me, it really is a budget issue, but it's also an issue about whether the program that we have in place is really working appropriately for our kids.
Yep.
And to me, this seems like a great time to take a look at that and maybe see what others are doing, and I, I will tell you, I've had some concerns about this role in schools, in high schools around the state of Vermont, and I've heard some feedback that, that disturbs me quite a bit, that maybe these programs aren't as effective as they could be.
Well, I think one of the things that we discovered at Springfield was that, you know, and I, I don't, I've never even met the person who was here, so I can't.
Yeah, and I wasn't talking about ours either.
Right, they're typically, because of the pay rate you're offering, they're typically not LDOCs, licensed drug and alcohol counselors. So that the method of approach that they're typically doing, again, not speaking about Leland and Gray's position, is really more, it's very similar to the support you can get from a guides counselor who has specific training in that area. It's, there's not really a special, I mean, they do some special trainings, but they're not typically LDOCs. And that's where you'd get a bang for your buck, but the bucks would be significantly more to have someone who's an LDA on staff.
Understood, but even if we get that kind of feedback and say it's gonna cost us a lot more to get a program that's effective, I'm ready to advocate for that at a different level if we need to. All I wanna know is, do the programs that we provide in our schools work effectively to help kids understand the dangers of drugs and, and counsel them appropriately to get, help them get off drugs if they're on, or not get on if they're not? And that's what I'd like to see, and I, I feel like this is a great opportunity for us to take the time. But at the same time, I think we also need to make sure there's support in place for the ongoing issues that are there, so I'm sure you'll.
There's a triage, the triage, there's the education point, there's the triage.
Yeah, we don't want to let anybody fall through the cracks, obviously, but, and I know Patty discussed that concern.
Absolutely.
Okay?
And with Act forty-six, if you have one board that's over all the schools, you could even start something earlier than high school. Because by high school, they might already be into it, you know, whereas in the elementary schools, might be more of a, a stopping point.
It can shift the education part and still do the triage part.
Follow the pathway through.
One of the things we did in Springfield is that we, the state of Vermont's requirements for health education for high school is a half, the equivalent of a half a credit. And that whole system is changing, which we're happy to talk to you guys about at some point, but we actually required a full credit of health education for high school, because we believe that there was that much importance, and because we had lost the SAP, that was one way to kinda counteract a little bit of what, what we were giving kids, so. Lots of different ways to kinda skin a cat, as they say.
Well, I appreciate you wanting to take the time. And I'll support that.
So, we need to vote. Action on the motion?
Yeah, I was gonna say, so, if, if anyone else has anything that they wanna discuss about the motion, otherwise, we can just bring it to a vote, right? The motion, I actually pulled up the minutes, the motion was to direct the administration to allocate the twenty-three thousand dollar surplus in the budget to help restore the position of SAP. So, if there's any more discussion, otherwise, all in favor of that motion, please say aye. Opposed? Nay? All right, motion fails. Next, we just had a note on the agenda for, you know, talking about the Act forty-six formal study committee, I know that that's in process. I know NuFain has appointed their people officially, haven't they?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
NuFain is meeting at six fifteen, Brookline is meeting at six fifteen to officially.
And they will officially appoint people?
Townsend has officially appointed.
They have?
Yep. You have been appointed.
I have?
Yes.
I was like, they, they didn't meet last night according to the WCSU calendar, so I didn't go.
Board chair, they have.
Okay, they've appointed, okay, so Townsend is appointed, it was really just a sort of a status update, I don't know what Wyndham has done, and I don't know what Jamaica will do now.
Yeah, I'm following both of those, I do not know either.
Okay. And then, this is a holdover, there is an open seat on the Leland and Gray board for the town of Brookline, so anybody watching from Brookline who wants to contact your local board, and you could be sitting here. It's like a commercial, isn't it? Last, last month, we started talking about the traditional staff breakfast, you know, I think the board has cooked breakfast for the staff of Leland and Gray for a while. Actually, since you're here, Bob, we can talk about scheduling it with you if it fits with your, you know, what, what you're gonna be doing with your staff in the beginning of the.
Only I knew that, Joe, that would be excellent, I haven't really worked with the day stuff yet, to be honest with you.
He had a tentative date put out.
Yeah, the, the tentative.
I feel you might know more about it.
Well, your, your staff will come back on the twenty-ninth. And the WCSU will have your staff's audience from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. But after that, it'll be under Bob's direction.
So, do you guys typically do it on that first day, or do you do it on the?
No, what we tentatively scheduled was the thirtieth.
Yeah, we would do it on.
The morning of the thirtieth, and then, I think, then you have your staff here that day, right? That whole day.
The thirtieth would be the appropriate.
So, so we typically do it on the day that, that you don't have the central office, meaning it's, it's the other one.
Right.
So, if, if, that's some, if that's a tradition and wanna continue, we'd, we'd be happy to continue it, although, it is a huge undertaking. And Patty brings up a very good point, that, you know, there's, there's, you know, we need to have full board participation.
I'm concerned, because we only have barely a quorum here tonight.
Right, we do, barely a quorum.
It's a shame.
You know, some of this we can do, some of this we can do by email, planning it, but, you know, as long as we have people who are here tonight actually saying, yes, I can participate, at least by providing food, if not coming and, and, you know, cooking, we're okay.
Well, when we get answers. Once you commit, you gotta.
I would, I would love to help coordinate as much as possible, I've catered huge events before, I have tons of food, I live on a farm, I work.
Now, can you come here and actually cook on that day?
She just, she just made it solid.
Who can say no to that?
Yeah, it's, it's your project.
I think we need to fill her in a little bit on the details. Because it is an overwhelming.
There's only about sixty people, it's not a huge event, we do pancakes, I've done for the last while bacon. I smoke my own bacon, so I'll do bacon, there's usually some quiches, some muffins, some fruit salads, you know. The biggest thing is getting somebody to actually show up and cook pancakes.
Yeah.
And then, the people to set up and tear down, I mean, the paper goods, the, the tablecloths, the knives, the forks, the plates, all of that, cups, I, I have. You know, and we can use Leland and Gray's kitchen for cooking, and that, that's so.
They've been very gracious.
Useful place, the Abby group is very gracious with us.
How would you feel about, like, really amazing bacon? That's like, from the area?
I make really amazing bacon.
Oh, okay. You're bringing?
Yeah, I do, I cure and smoke ten pounds of bacon and cut it up for us.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
I, I promise, it's good bacon.
It's applewood smoked, it's cooked about three days before the event.
I wasn't judging your bacon.
No, no, no.
His bacon gets judged.
His bacon is so good, then we have a former staff member here who would take literally a plateful of it with him.
A couple hounds home, yes.
Because he liked it so much, it was, it is.
Yeah.
Maybe you should be selling that Brookline seat.
That's a good way to, that's a good point.
So.
I can be there that morning as well, and I will contribute my usual.
Patty? Drew?
Sure.
Twyla? Come on, you'll make it unanimous.
Even if you can't be there, can you contribute?
I can definitely contribute something.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I can be there on the thirtieth, I can be there on the twenty-ninth.
You'll be a day early.
Did you say you could be there? And, and you, Patty, too?
Yeah.
And you, Ally? That's more than we've ever had for commitment right now.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
So, even if you can't make it, Twyla, that's actually great.
Even if I can, I can definitely, I did, I did last year, and that was fine.
All right, so I have a list of food that people, that we, kind of gives us an idea of what to contribute, I'll get with you, like, you know, outside of a meeting, we'll email it around and we'll get it figured out.
You, you get to come for breakfast if you want.
Yeah, you come for breakfast, Tom.
We don't make the student, we don't make the student board members actually work, but we do invite them for breakfast, we also invite Wyndham Central staff. You know, we hope you will show up.
Yes.
Every year, we. Love that.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so it sounds like we're going on the thirtieth.
Can I just ask one question about that?
Sure.
Who's doing the coordinating? Because it sounds like you got Ally.
Ally.
Are you gonna help her with the process?
I'll help Ally, yeah.
Because there's a list of.
I have all the old emails, I've coordinated it by email before, I have a lot of that, just kind of there, so I will help, I will help you do it, but we'll get it put together for August thirtieth.
The biggest thing that I was happy to let go. Just so you know, it was a nightmare.
It feels like a year.
I am telling you, to try to coordinate it was a nightmare.
So, we've got that figured out, excellent. Dominic, you really should come if you like bacon, and thank you, Ally. Okay, beautiful, August thirtieth.
Is it like, six, third, seven?
Yeah.
We have to start setting up.
We have to be here like about seven, six-thirty or seven.
And your staff starts coming in around?
Eight-eight-thirty?
Quarter of eight, eight-thir, eight, no, eight.
Tell me when.
Whatever, it doesn't matter to us.
Yes, whatever your schedule is, I'll talk to you.
As long as the door's unlocked.
I'll get keys.
Is there gonna be a door unlocked?
He's gonna get keys.
Yeah, I'll get keys and be here. That's easy enough.
Perfect.
All right, so, Lori, you didn't mention under, under your reports section, I know you have two things that you want us to approve, that you need motions on.
Oh, right.
For check signers and. It's a check, check signing and also an auditor's engagement letter?
Right.
Okay.
That, I don't know, needs to be signed, the resolution has to be voted on, and then I think it, the clerk, the board clerk is supposed to bring it to the bank to sign it.
This is for who's gonna be on the check sign?
Yes, so, so the resolution is to add Randy Morton, who's our assistant business manager, to be able to sign checks. We thought it would be prudent to have two in the office that could.
Yep.
Joe knows, I had to call him.
Bruce is not our board clerk.
Okay, so that has changed since?
Yeah, that has to go, I'm the clerk now.
Okay.
Emily is our clerk.
Bruce is no longer on the board.
Okay.
So, can, do we have to get new?
I think if we cross it out and initial it. The bank actually filled that in, so she must have had some old information.
She must have, yeah, he, he only just got off the board in March.
Yes. So, these are just, these are just the, the deposit, the banking resolutions for the Peoples to add a signer for, to add Randy Morton as a signer. And then, we need to have, the motion needs to authorize Emily to sign it for the bank, right?
Unless somebody else make the motion.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right.
Could we have the wording?
To adopt the pre-printed banking resolutions from Peoples United Bank to allow, to add Randy Morton as an authorized signer.
Randall.
Randall.
She said Randy.
R-A-N-D-A-L.
He's a Randall.
You're welcome, and Drew made the motion and Patty seconded it, any discussion on the motion?
No, it's to also have me sign.
Oh, yeah, and to.
Authorize the clerk to sign.
Authorize the clerk to sign. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Let's have it. All right, Emily, I'll leave it with you to, it's like you signed it in front of a notary.
Right, you have to go to the bank to sign.
I'll do, yeah, I think I mentioned this the last time.
The next.
So, do you want me to keep this, or you want me to?
Keep that.
And stop at the bank and.
This is just the, this is the con, basically the contract to be audited?
Yes, it's the engagement letter.
Okay, engagement letter. And that needs to be signed by?
The governance, is what it says, so, I mean, you can.
Yeah, probably.
You can sign that.
It's the auditor's engagement letter, it gets signed by management and governance, so I would, I would expect, I'll sign it as chair.
Yeah, the boards for a board just made a motion to authorize the chair to sign.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the letter of engagement?
Engagement letter.
Letter of engagement for the auditor. For the auditor.
You got that, Peter?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? All right.
Actually, I have one question.
Sure.
Did we go out a bit on this one, or is this, because we don't have to do it every year, but I.
No, it's every three years, and so we're staying with the same auditors that we had last year, the D O group.
Okay, thank you.
What was the cost of the audit?
For Leland and Gray, I believe it's nine thousand, it says it in the engagement letter right there.
Fees? Fees? Do you know where it says it's?
I do, I think it says it's on the front page, actually.
It got, it got rolled in with other. Yeah, they got, they got nine thousand.
Nine thousand, oh, it is in there, okay.
Audit service professional fees, nine thousand nine. F Y seventeen, it's twenty-three hundred, three, three, two.
Yep.
Okay, so it's nine thousand.
Correct.
Any more questions, discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's have it. Next is, next up is to approve the bills and pay orders. They've all been reviewed and everything's fine, it looks like there was one transpose digit.
Two hundred and forty-five dollar error, so I took it off the totals.
Okay. Okay, so those are the new correct totals?
Mm-hmm.
See if correct with it.
All right.
And you ran it by Lori?
Yes.
And, yep.
It was from this one here.
Okay.
And so then I made this totaled, and then made the final total.
Okay, thanks.
And Lori reviewed it.
And Lori reviewed it.
Yep.
Okay. So, we have warrants, we have one, two, three, four, five, six warrants, and the totaling seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. And one payroll and two, just sort of general fund payroll, no, three payrolls totaling one sixty, one hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and four cents, for a total of nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. I'm sorry, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-three cents. The motion approved that?
So moved, seconded.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Perfect.
I'm sorry, who moved a second?
Twyla and Ally.
I'll give you that in a second, Peter. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of June fourteenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Other business, let's talk about the Jamaica vote, it's really, it's really, those are the official results?
It's right on the Jamaica website.
Okay, so Jamaica voted to withdraw, so the next steps now are what? The other towns now have to all vote to, vote as to whether we allow Jamaica to withdraw?
For you.
And, and as a board, we probably, I mean, there'll be some PR, I would imagine.
Well, I mean, if I could.
Yes, please.
This is not any small thing for the other four communities, and while Jamaica's been having a conversation, an ongoing conversation for quite some time, about many issues, the other four communities haven't had this conversation at all, and will need to completely understand what the impact would be on them if they made the decision to agree to allow Jamaica to withdraw from Leland and Gray Union High School District. And so, it's going to take a, a lot of effort, I think, on the part of each community to make sure that information is shared, and that people know what that impact will be, and that there's a very strong effort to get the vote out, because I would feel very disappointed if my community voted anyway with a low turnout, doesn't matter what the outcome is, if the turnout is low, that's really discouraging, and, because this is a very significant vote. And so, I am disappointed, I will say, and.
Could another, sorry, I have a question, could another community start a?
Could another, sorry, I have a question. Could another community start a petition for a re-vote or would that?
No.
It has to be Jamaica.
So there is, that, that's something that can happen.
Well, I mean, there could be a.
What's the percentage? Five?
It's not even just, you, you might wanna, I mean, there was only three, three votes different. Somebody might wanna have a recount. I mean, the community might make a decision to recount.
Okay, so there's options here.
Yeah, and I think you, people need to look into what the options are.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Drew.
So, I mean, as a Jamaica resident that's been involved and listened to a lot of the conversation, I guess, where I'd like to see the conversation go and, and challenge the new administration, whether there's a real or a perceived lack of educational opportunity at this institution, that problem exists to the point where this vote happened and passed, and that's a real concern to me. And I would ask the administration to look at what is it that is causing residents in Jamaica to think that this school is not providing their students with the educational opportunities that they believe they need. So whether we agree with the vote or we don't agree with the vote, as a board, I think we need to be looking at this vote for what it is, which is a big red flag saying we need to do some looking internally to see what is, is it that we need to do to make this school stronger and more attractive to all of the students in the area? As opposed to how do we kind of take a defensive stance? I think we need to be looking at it from a, how do we engage the discussion of creating the educational opportunity that these voters were voting in favor of?
So, can I follow up on that? Because I think, I totally agree with you. This is not about defending anything. It is, it is, and it's not just for Jamaica either. We should be doing that anyway. That's what our job is. But I would only question whether that is the only reason why people are voting no. So I want to make sure that we understand from Jamaica, why people, I mean, voted yes, why people voted to leave. Is it simply, is that the real reason? I, I don't actually know if that's the only reason. I've heard a lot of talk around real estate values and things like that, as to whether that has something to do with it. So I, I guess it would be very important to me to know what the reasons are and I, maybe there were exit polls taken or what, I don't know. What Jamaica's done. I did attend the information meeting last week up in Jamaica and it seemed like most people up there had made up their minds, I think, in that room. And I didn't hear an awful lot of complaints about, I don't remember a lot of complaints about the quality of education at Leland and Gray. So I guess I just would, I totally agree with your statement, but I would add that part onto it. We need to know what we're dealing with here.
I think that's the, what we need to be looking for. What I've heard is that there are more educational opportunities for students given school of choice. And that is something that we should be looking at. If there are educational opportunities that our students don't have, we should figure out how to get those opportunities for them. And I think by the sounds of it, in the first seven days of this administration, we've already started going down that path. And I would like to see us engage with the community, the, the people that are feeling like there's greener grass elsewhere and find out what is it that is missing? When, when have we taken the opportunity to look at ourselves and say, what are we missing? We may have a great program, but it may not be the best program. If there's something that is better out there, then we should be looking at how to get it for our kids. As opposed to, you know, kind of taking this, I can't believe they voted, you know, in favor of it. I think we need to be looking at it more from a perspective of, there's clearly a real or perceived problem if this vote actually passed. And what is it that we need to do as a board to make sure that we are providing the education our kids deserve?
Anna?
I do believe that the committees that were formed, the four committees that were formed in Jamaica, did very comprehensive research, especially the last committee. There was more evidence that Leland and Gray stands up very well to any school in the state as opposed to any issues. And I do know that when I have questioned people mostly up at Stratton, because that's where I work and that's where I see people, and there are people that I know who have said, oh, you don't want to send your kid to a school in the valley. You don't want to buy real estate in Jamaica or anywhere else. I ask them, what is it that you think is missing from the schools that are in the valley? Have you ever been to the schools? Have you ever gone and talked with the leaders of the schools? Have you, you know, really investigated? And they're stuck. They don't have a response from me because they have not. So that's, you know, I, I, I believe from, from that limited knowledge that it's, there's a lot of perceptions and there's a lot of talking out there. And Burn Burton has an amazing facility. And no, no public school can really stand up to the facility that they have because they have a ton of money. And it's just, I, I believe there's a perception, a lot of it is perception. Now, there may be some people who have, and I know some people who, who their kids start here and then they move them. And those are the people who maybe have, you know, experiences that, that they might like to talk about. But I think there is a lot of perception up there too and a lot of talk that people, their friend tells them this and boom.
So if I could just say one last thing, because it's really important to me to have this conversation, and that is what, what students are able or what families are able to take advantage of choice and what aren't. And so to me, it's, it's about equity of educational opportunities for kids. And as we move forward, no matter what, we need to make sure that we're providing every single student in the communities that are part of Leland and Gray Union High School and any other student outside of there who wants to tuition in, as we've always done, making sure that they all have equal access to excellent, to quality education. And I think we provide a quality education here. I think we can do better. And I think, I've always thought we could do better and I think I always will think we can do better. But I think we've worked really hard on that, so I just want to make sure that we are focused on every child. And if, and so, speaking more broadly, if Jamaica leaves, Leland and Gray, if the other four towns did vote yes to allow Jamaica to go, I would, I, I'm sort of saying this because I want to shift a little bit to Bill and I hate to do this because I don't know how else to do it, but I need to. The impact on Wyndham Central will be really great because it's not just on Leland and Gray. And if, if the vote is to leave Leland and Gray, we need to understand whether Leland and Gray is actually viable then with four instead of five communities. So I, so this is going to require a lot of information.
Yes.
And I'm not quite even, I, I don't even know myself how to get all the information we need for the other four communities to be able to understand what it means so that they're voting on facts.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think you, you have to look at it from, you know, just a perspective of what kind of revenues would shift and what kind of long-term impact it could have on all five communities. And I think that, you know, in our new administrative world here, we're going to have to provide that kind of information to each of the communities of what do those scenarios look like to have a well-informed conversation. I think all of you make extremely important points that, you know, we're at a time right now in education in Vermont where we want to have these conversations about what is in the best interest of our students. And I think we need to take this as an opportunity to have those discussions. And let's gather the information, let's be transparent, let's share it, let's have that discussion. And each community will make the decisions well-informed and we'll move forward from there. So I think we have a lot of work that we'll have to do to, to make sure that we answer the questions of each community, Leland and Gray as a whole, so informed conversations can happen. We will be completely available to share our programs, our plans, our thoughts. You know, this is a fresh opportunity to, to, to bring that energy to this conversation. So, you know, the vote happened and, you know, let's take it as a, as a moment to kind of look at where we're at and provide everybody with what they need.
So the A O E can probably be a
Oh, absolutely.
really big resource for us here and I think that'd be the first place I'd be going.
Absolutely, yeah. No, this is a nice.
Good information.
Nice little challenge right in the very beginning. You know, let's take it as an opportunity to inform our citizens about everything that's going on.
I have one more.
Sure.
I, I hope that your communities will not satisfy themselves with, with not every single ounce of information that they should have to make this decision. I feel that the Jamaica thing happened way too fast. There was not a lot of financial information, accurate, comprehensive financial information before that vote happened. It was just suppositions with lines and, and what the tax rate will do. But the real impacts, I, I don't think, I just don't think there was enough, there was time for enough information and the, and the public did not demand it.
But, but we're talking time? I mean, at the same time, I mean, to be fair, Jamaica also voted to join the study committee and there's a time limit on that as well.
Right.
So I don't know how much time we have to make sure that, I mean, you know, I, I think, I agree totally with what you said, but we probably are going to be on a limited timeframe, I would assume.
Yeah.
To get this information out to the other communities. I, I don't, that's a question that I think we should be looking into. What's the timeframe on this? Because there isn't any question. Communities right now are appointing members to their study committees. The four, the five school districts are appointing members to the study committee and that study committee is going to start meeting with the potential to be done with their study by mid-winter and, and a potential vote is what I'm hearing. If I'm, if I'm wrong, correct me, but by March, by town meeting.
Yes, that is definitely.
So that timeframe doesn't allow for a lot of.
I think there's going to have to be some parallel.
Yeah.
Work.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Because, because I, I want to know how it's going to affect the study committee work is what I'm saying. If Jamaica, it would be interesting to hear what Jamaica's school board feels about that because they did, they do want to move forward, but I, I just don't understand how it impacts that.
We are in a.
Because it's a pre-K twelve education system we're studying.
We're in a new world.
Yeah.
And we're in a new situation that we have no model for.
We're, we're just throwing out questions for you to.
Yeah, no. Luckily, tomorrow at noon, I will be able to meet with our newly formed central office cabinet to discuss these types of issues. Oh, to be a fly on that wall.
I am so sorry that this is the fun board.
Hey.
That's good.
This is why we're on here.
Glad you're on board and you know what's going on.
We're all here to do the puzzle.
Thank you.
Twyla?
So the other four towns, they all have to vote to approve Jamaica?
Oh.
Okay, it's not a majority rules or?
No, it's every single one has to vote.
Okay.
Or it doesn't happen.
But I'm shocked it happened.
Just a mechanics question. Does Jamaica now come to each town and say, well, we voted to withdraw, so now you have to have a vote?
No, I think we're required to vote the vote.
Do we know this?
I don't know the answer to that.
I'm just curious about the mechanics of this all.
It would, it would be my assumption that by simply a ratified vote, it then causes action based on the other members of the union.
And that's the responsibility of each one of the union towns. Leland and Gray really doesn't have any responsibility other than, you know, supporting our towns and giving, and disseminating information and advocating for a position.
You know, we'll, we'll have to think about this, but I would think, I think Drew is right, that this is probably the hub for expressing the information in one central location. Because in a way, you don't have a vote, but you represent voters from the communities that will.
That's true about the study committee, but we actually, this is a little different because we are a school district and we are the board for a school district here, so I know there's five towns. I mean, I'm not, I mean, we need to, that's the answer we need to.
So you, you can, right, but yeah.
We will need to be involved. There's going to be a lot of questions.
There's going to be a lot of discussion now.
Because we have our own separate budget and all that, so we need to know.
There's your August ninth agenda.
You know, my, the next thing I was going to talk about is traditionally we skip one, but I'm not sure we can skip August.
We may even have to.
Yeah, we may even have to have a, a special meeting, you know, like end of July or end of August. You know, that second, that fourth Tuesday thing. Yes.
This is research heaven here.
All right, so probably we can't skip August. We don't.
This could be the easiest thing I have to do.
There's, there's no need for an executive session, is there?
I do not.
All right. Is there any other, other business? All right, so our next meeting is August ninth at seven. I just need a motion.
Make a motion, Wade Jern.
What?
Also.
All right, all in favor, please say aye. And we're done.